Members, good afternoon. We have a quorum. I call to order the meeting of the Special Finance Committee meeting. The meeting will run from two thirty to six thirty in three sessions. All questions must be directly related to the estimates of expenditure. If members would like to follow up on the written reply of the administration, please quote the number at the top right-hand corner. For example, E E B E O O one. If members cannot follow up on the written reply of the administration during the meeting, members can write to the administration, to the secretariat. I welcome Mr. Che Chin Hwan, Secretary for Environment and Ecology and his team. Mr. Che and his team will answer questions in relation to the environment and ecology aspect. Members who would like to speak, please press a, please press a button to request to speak. The secretary will give us opening remarks. Mr. Che, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chairman. As the Financial Secretary emphasized in the budget, green development is defining, is a defining feature of high-quality development. To align with our country's dual-carbon goals, Hong Kong will continue to implement various decarbonization strategies and measures and develop green tech innovation and other industries to promote a green and low-carbon production mode and lifestyle, thereby striving to achieve carbon neutrality before twenty fifty and halving carbon emissions before twenty thirty-five from the two thousand and fifth level. Innovative technology plays a pivotal role in achieving carbon neutrality. The Green Tech Fund, G T F, has already approved thirty research and development projects involving a total grant of about one hundred and thirty million dollars. The projects cut across a wide array of subjects such as production and storage of hydrogen fuel. G T F helps the industry develop green technologies with commercialization and application values, expediting low-carbon transformation in Hong Kong. As a member of the Green and Sustainable Finance Cross-Agency Steering Group, the E E B will continue to work with other member agencies to coordinate the management of climate and environmental risks to the financial sector, accelerate the growth of green and sustainable finance in Hong Kong, contributing to Hong Kong's pathway to carbon neutrality. As for new energy transport, to continue promoting the popularization of E Vs, this year's budget announced that the first registration tax concession arrangement for E Vs will be extended for two years. We will also continue to promote the trials of new energy transport technologies riding on the progress made in recent years, such as the commencement of services of the first hydrogen fuel cell bus in February. The number of parking spaces with charging infrastructure will jump to about two hundred thousand by mid twenty twenty-seven. We are rigorously following up with petrofueling stations P E F S operators on the latest plan to retrofit quick-charging facilities at P F S and we formulate a citywide green transformation roadmap for public buses and taxis within this year. According to the Environmental Protection Department's recent understanding with the trade, there is a steady and sufficient supply of non-plastic alternatives to tableware and hotel toiletries in the market. We have recently noticed that most of the major restaurant chains have switched to alternatives or will do so from the implementation date, reflecting that the trade is well-prepared. Upon the implementation of the new legislation, the E P D will adopt a progressive enforcement model by arranging staff to inspect relevant business premises during the six-month adaptation period, focusing on promotion and education and providing appropriate advice to assist business in complying with the requirements under the new legislation. The community has, has expressed many views and concerns about the implementation of and arrangements for the legislation on M S W charging. These comments are from various sectors of the community, frontline workers, restaurants, residential care homes, as well as different trades and industries. The government has heard these voices. As a responsible and people-oriented government, we must have a clear understanding of the impact of M S W charging on different sectors of the community and the problems associated with the introduction of M S W charging. Therefore, while we have deferred the implementation date of M S W charging to August first, so that there would be more time for the preparation, we have also launched a demonstration scheme to primarily thoroughly and in detail examine the problems that may arise during the implementation of M S W charging, review the process and actual practices on different stakeholders. Last but not least, the government is committed to conserving Hong Kong's natural ecology and enriching visitors' experience in countryside. On March first this year, the Robins Nest Country Park was formally set up, becoming the twenty-fifth country park. We expect the sedative procedures for designing the eighth marine park, namely the Northlandham Marine Park, will be completed this year. The Countryside Conservation Office protects the natural ecology, revitalizes village architectural environments and conserve cultural resources and historical heritage in remote countryside through the launch of the Countryside Conservation Funding Scheme and Minor Improvement Works projects. We expect that smart countryside conservation trails will be established this year at Lichiwu and so on. We'll also take forward the work for the establishment of the Wetland Conservation Park System in the North Metropolis and will first establish the Shampu Shu Wetland Conservation Park. In this regard, the A F C D is conducting a strategic feasibility study, which is expected to be completed in the first half of this year, so facilitating the government to consider specific implementation plans. My team and I are happy to answer members' questions. The floor is now open for questions. On time management, I will give members three minutes, question and answers included. Based on our experience, we can allow fifteen members to ask questions. I will read out their names. I may not be allowed the remaining members to ask questions. Members are in order. Mr. Tong Li-che, Adrian Ho, Robert Lee, Perry Yu, Tommy Zheng, Chen Xiu-hong, Martin Liu, Ms. Connie Lam, Mr. Edward Long, Kwok-Wai Kung, Ms. Elizabeth Court, Dr. Chow Man Kong, Mr. Tang Flau, Dr. Lo Wai Kwok, Ms. Chan Ho Yan. Four minutes, question and answers included. I'd like to remind members, please manage your time well. Allow some time for the administration to answer your questions. If you take too much time, I will ask the secretary to answer only part of your questions and he will have to follow up on your remaining questions in a written reply or representation. We need to be fair to all colleagues. First member, Mr. Tong Li-che.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on reply E E B O two six and O two seven. On O two seven, I mean on O two six, it's about food waste reduction. This is close to the heart of many people. In the written reply, it shows that the rate is far from satisfactory. In twenty twenty-two, it was still five point six percent. Three thousand three hundred tons of food waste accounting for some thirty percent of those disposed of at the public landfills. The administration would like to reduce waste. From twenty eighteen to now, the results have been far from satisfactory. Is it because of a lack of funding of the administration or are there any other reasons? How can we achieve the goal of zero landfill in twenty thirty? Next, reply O two seven. It's about the use of E Vs to reduce carbon emissions or vehicle emissions. The number of registration of vehicles, like public light buses and private minibus. In twenty twenty-three, there was only one. Is the administration satisfied with the figure? How can the administration promote it? What difficulties have you account, have you encountered? Secretary, questions on two fronts. Regarding food waste, I will invite the Director of the Environmental Protection to take the question.
Dr. Samuel Choi, Director of Environmental Protection. Thank you, Chairman. I'll take the question about food waste. The E P D is striving to reduce food waste and recycle food waste. Since last September, in each housing estate, we have installed food waste processing facilities. In Hong Kong, seventy percent of the public housing estates have a food waste bin, that is a smart food waste bin, serving over one point five million citizens. Well, Chairman, I'd like to know the recovery rate. Director, do you have the figures? Well, regarding the recovery rate, it's about five percent. The second question, well.
So what is the administration doing, only five percent?
Well, I'd like to explain that we are progressively increasing the number of food waste processing facilities in public housing estates. We are serving one point five million citizens in over seventy percent of the public housing estates in Hong Kong. This August, all public housing estates will be equipped with a smart food waste processing bins that covers over thirty percent of the citizens in Hong Kong. They can apply to recycling fund and other funds as well. Well, Director, what is your target recovery rate? We are talking about many people. Well, I need to manage time well. Maybe, Director, you need to reply to the member after the meeting. About the second question on E Vs, can you give us a brief reply? For minibus, we don't have sufficient models. But the administration is already implementing a pilot scheme on e-public light buses. We are inviting the applications from the relevant operators to run trials. We will, in a progressive manner, increase the number of such vehicles. Next, Mr. Adrian Ho.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on E E B O seven one. It's my question. In the reply, the administration said that in twenty twenty-three to twenty-four financial year, a total of nine hundred million dollars were devoted to reducing waste and recycling. And that is the expenditure before the implementation of M S W charging. There are a lot of voices in the community about the implementation of M S W charging, reflecting the shortage of recycling facilities. Members of the public cannot work with the government to reduce waste in this connection. So how can we be on the same path with other economies where environmental protection and reduction of food waste is it's very positive? So how can we achieve reducing waste as source? Thank you, Secretary. On reducing waste as source and recycling or waste sorting, I'd like to ask Dr. Samuel Choi, Director of Environmental Protection, to take your question. I will pass the questions to Mr. Bruno Look, Deputy Director. In twenty twenty-three to twenty-four, before M S W charging was implemented, we spent nine hundred million dollars on the recycling network. In fifty public housing estates, there are already the relevant facilities and we will expand the network. We will also spend two hundred million dollars to implement food waste recycling in other housing estates. We will put more and more resources in this connection. Any follow-up? No? Next, Mr. Robert Lee.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on E E B one O seven. According to the administration's reply, the K M B and the city bus in the past three years applied for subsidy. And there were two rounds of trials of electric double-deckers. In twenty twenty-three, this trial scheme was rolled out. So my question is, why these franchise bus companies decided to withdraw from the trial scheme? And how effective was the trial? Had it to do with the lack of charging points? There are eighty-two electric buses being commissioned at the moment. I want to know whether this is within your expectation. By the end of twenty twenty-seven, you're supposed to achieve the goal of commissioning about seven hundred e-buses. Are we on schedule? Yes, about e-buses, um. Doctor Kenneth Lawan can take this question, please. The two franchise bus companies applied for funding under the New Energy Transport Fund on their own initiative. These two bus companies have plans to replace a fleet with electric buses. So at the time, the trials were conducted relation to single-deckers. And yet, for double-deckers at that time, uh, more time was needed to develop double-deckers. But subsequently, these bus companies were able to secure models relating to double-deckers. They also forked out money to procure such buses. We're in the process of collecting data in this regard. At this point, we see that the bus, the e-buses are able to ply the routes with adequate charging facilities. Comparing to diesel-fueled buses, um, these e-buses are more expensive. Their prices are fifty percent higher. So in terms of giving an overhaul to the bus fleets, replacing them with e-buses, we need to set a timetable. So what about this goal of, um, by the end of twenty twenty-seven? Are we on schedule? Do you have confidence in achieving this goal? We are discussing with the franchise bus companies because we need to find out the schedules they have in replacing the fleet with e-buses. Next, Mr. Yopak Lau.
Thank you, Chairman. I want to ask two quest, follow-up questions. One is relating to E E B zero one two and the other two one one. I learned from the administration's reply that within this year, the government will conduct a feasibility study and five hundred million dollars have been set aside on recreational facilities in country parks. According to the latest reply from the administration, the feasibility study mentions the setting up of open museums, tree-top adventure facilities and eco, but not eco lodge in country parks. So I want to know whether you're going to keep to the idea of setting up eco lodges. And what about the mode of operation? Will the government consider collaborating with the tourism industry so that we can further promote eco-tourism and develop more products? And then for, um, reply number two one one, um, I see that there are some programs that are really popular, operated by the Countryside Conservation Office. And in Muizilam, uh, there would be a smart countryside conservation trail and also another one in Lichiwu. But then the C C O is silent on how they're going to promote these countryside conservation trails to the public. So more resources to be devoted to the Countryside Conservation Office so that a joint effort can be made with the industry to promote these trails. Two questions, Secretary. On eco lodge, um, the Director of A F C can take the question. About eco-tourism, Ellen can take this question in a moment. Yes, who'd like to give a start? About the new camping facilities, the department is conducting a study. We also conduct a public engagement, we consult the stakeholders, and definitely the tourism industry is one of them. We're going to take views from these participants as well as the stakeholders. Having collected views from the public and stakeholders on the matter of eco lodges, we are of the view that within country parks, we should enhance the existing facilities, but we should not proceed with eco lodges. Eco lodges can be set up on private premises, uh, which would be more appropriate. So what we will do is to enhance and increase the provision of existing camping facilities. Yes, about the Countryside Conservation Office, please. Let me supplement the work of the C C O. As mentioned by the member, the C C O has been in close liaison with the tourism sector through the Hong Kong Tourism Board and we will continue to take this forward. Uh, there is a funding scheme to preserve the countryside and since its launch in October twenty twenty-two, forty-five projects have been approved um, with three hundred and eighty thousand attendances. These participants are locals as well as visitors. Now, you're, the member asked how we should further promote our countryside to the visitors. The C C O will continue to work with the Tourism Commission and will be in liaison with the tourism sector. Mr. Tommy Zheng, E E B bracket E, uh, O six two. That's a question from me. I asked about the, uh, smart recycling facilities such as the ones provided by the green and community. According to Part One of the administration's reply, starting from March twenty twenty-three, the recycling bins will progressively be set up in housing estates. Well, Secretary, you may recall that on more than one location, I told you this, be it private housing estates or otherwise, space is available. You don't need to set up the bins in shopping malls and you can have one, um, place for recycling. I live in a housing estate with a vast area for this purpose. Perhaps you need to apply for a temporary waiver with the lands department. Now, how about this? I have a suggestion. You can take the lead and then you can work with the private and public housing estates and housing department. You can set up a one-stop service. For all the interested parties, they should go to you and ask for various kinds of permits, waivers with the lands department. And then you can also decide how much funding should be dispersed. So on top of the recycling bins, you can also set up solar panels that can supply power to the smart recycling bins. I know that this is a policy issue, but simply on the matter of the dollar sign, perhaps you can provide a one-stop service. I don't know since March twenty twenty-three to now, how many private housing estates have been included? Because I understand that an approval from the lands department may be necessary. So perhaps, uh, your bureau can take the lead and with the help of the, uh, Deputy Chief Secretary, you can just expedite the process. And then, um, at every housing estate, there will be a place for the, all the recyclables. They can come together at one point for processing. Secretary. Uh, that's a suggestion. Yes, thank you, Mr. Zheng, for his suggestion. We are exploring different options of expanding the recycling network and will definitely consider your suggestion and see how this can help us build the network more expeditiously. Uh, I have three or four minutes, four minutes. All right, in passing, I'd like to say this to you. I've been talking to the lunchbox pro, uh, suppliers and I have been talking to the school sponsoring bodies. And in fact, I am talking to the council of the school sponsoring bodies and it, so far, the response has been positive. After our deliberations, if we can achieve a consensus and find a way forward, I can then, um, start negotiating with you. Right, um, next, Mr. Chen Xiu-hong.
Thank you, Chairman. A follow-up question. That's a question from me. E E B bracket E O five O. Food waste recycling is one important element of recycling work in Hong Kong. According to the administration's reply, over a hundred private housing estates have applied for subsidy under the pilot scheme and only seventeen applications have been approved for the installation of a smart recycling bins. Now, it's been so many months and the progress is so slow. Will you consider expediting the process? The community has made strong views on M S W charging, but there is a neglect on the food waste recycling scheme. Now, the scheme, uh, will you be able to achieve the goal of expanding the scheme to cover over one thousand households? Another question is this. There will be a subsidy for private, uh, housing estates to install facilities for the collection of food waste. There is also another pilot scheme on food waste smart recycling bins. Um, for the former, starting from twenty twenty, one hundred million dollars were set aside under the recycling fund and so far, thirty-one million dollars were, uh, have been approved. For the latter, thirty million dollars, um, have been set aside under another fund. Will you consider consolidating the resources so that we can see more smart food re, waste recycling bins installed in private housing estates? Right, uh, one on the recycling bins and the other on the arrangements of the two schemes. Uh, I'll ask the Director to take the questions. Why don't I take this question? About the figure of one thousand households cited in the reply, in fact, we've received one hundred and fifty applications and we've approved forty of them. In five housing estates, we've installed twenty, uh, such, uh, facilities, so we are working expeditiously. For the five hundred other households, by the middle of this year or June, say, uh, we hope to achieve this target. About the, uh, recycling fund and the E C F, uh, we do find some sort of overlapping and there is room to consolidate resources. For the one under the recycling fund, uh, it was rolled out earlier and then after gaining experience, we rolled out another pilot scheme under the E C F. And we will be evaluating the effectiveness of these two schemes and see how we can consolidate resources and more expeditiously serve the private estates. I have another question, O five six, about E P L B trial schemes. According to the reply, only two E P L Bs have been included in the trial. The original target of the government was forty E P L Bs. It was later lowered to thirty, now there are only two. In fact, the three models are available for selection and these two operators have actually chosen the same model, so there are only two E P L Bs being tried out in the pilot. Because, uh, if you don't expand the scheme using the same model, you won't be able to gauge the effectiveness. I'll ask Doctor Lau to take this question.
Thank you, Chairman. We've just started the pilot scheme and in fact, we've started the second round of the scheme and we've invited the P L B operators to submit applications afresh. We have two trial points, one in Kowloon Town and the other one in Kuantong. Uh, we are trying to include more operators and more models in the trial. It, that takes time.
Next, Mr. Martin Liu. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on reply one nine four. According to the reply of the administration in the year twenty twenty-four to twenty-five, According to the reply of the administration in the year twenty twenty four to twenty five, in achieving carbon neutrality, it's about the estimates in manpower. It's about um five hun- one hundred and fifty-two million dollars. In January twenty twenty three, the administration set a directory position, D three, a commissioner for climate change. It's responsible for the office of climate change. It drives the research and use of new energy. It also promotes international collaboration. As the strategic point of low-carbon transformation, we need to implement strategies to reduce carbon emissions. Apart from the measures mentioned in the reply, we also need to monitor the relevant carbon emissions in order to promote the development of carbon market in the mainland. So I'd like to know the work in this connection. I'll ask Mister Wong, Commissioner for Climate Change, to take this question. In relation to carbon neutrality and international collaboration, the estimate is about one hundred and fifty-two million dollars. It's about the Green Tech Fund, G T F, and some of the manpower expenditure in the Office for Climate Change. In relation to regional collaboration on carbon transactions and so on, since the establishment of the Office for Climate Change last year, we have been maintaining a close dialogue with different stakeholders. That is with Hong Kong X, F S T B and so on. We have been continued to work on this front. I mean, we have been continuing to work on this front. We have got an understanding of the development in the mainland market. If need be, we will work with the relevant counterparts in the mainland market. I'd like to follow up on the reply from the administration. I still have time left. The estimate is one hundred and fifty-two million dollars. It's about manpower costs. There is no detail about manpower expenditure. Do you have any breakdown of such information? The Office for Climate Change has a total of twenty odd officers. One hundred and fifty-two million dollars also cover two funds under it. That is Green Tech Fund, G T F, and Sustainable Development Fund. Thank you. Next, Miss Connie Lam.
Thank you, Chairman. Secretary, regarding M S W charging, there are still uncertainties looming on the horizon. I'd like to note the the direction forward and the implementation proposal based on the demonstration scheme. Do you plan to designate some spots as black spots of disposal of waste? Some groups suggest installing C C T Vs to monitor an illegal disposal of waste. Some even suggested using green bags, that is the designated bags. According to the paper in twenty twenty four to twenty five, the administration will set up C C T Vs, the expenditure of which is about eight million dollars. If M S W charging will be launched according to schedule, do we need to install C C T Vs in the demonstration scheme? If yes, how many of them? In, I mean recently, of the refuse station or the refuse collection station, there's many um furniture left outside the station. Let's take a look at another picture. The cardboard, the cardboard boxes are scattered throughout the housing estate. Members of the public lack awareness. Cleaners will have to clear all these up. It's impossible to install C C T V in private housing estates. So how can we make sure the public will heighten their awareness? How can we make sure the use of designated bags will be successful? Well, your questions are very clear, but do you have the uh reply serial number to provide to the administration? Well, I'm concerned about M S W charging. The secretary is right with us. Well, Secretary, could you please reply to a member's question? Indeed. We are concerned about exacerbating the problem of littering as a result of the M S W charging scheme. So on the one hand, through the demonstration scheme, we want to conduct tests to see whether people will discard litter anywhere in public housing estates. But the problem, I mean the situation is not serious as M S W charging is not in effect yet. How do we combat the issue of littering? I'll ask Mister Bruno, Look Deputy Director, to give you more information. Thank you, Chairman. Refuge collection points, refuse collection spots in residential premises, these are designated spots. There's a dedicated team responsible for the hygienic conditions of these places under the E P D. There's a transitional period of six months where enforcement action will not be taken. But if someone litters anywhere, we will invoke the relevant ordinance and take enforcement actions seriously. Miss Connie Lam is also concerned about the setting up of black spots. Next, Mister Edward Leng.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on reply one O nine. On August first, the M S W charging scheme will be in effect. There are views in the community saying that there's a lack of facility or supporting measures. Housing estates or um single-block buildings with many households, food waste facilities or three-color bins should be set up. As we all know, we need to implement M S W charging in the future. In the absence of legislation, will we be put on the cart before the horse? Will there be many illegal situations in the future? I believe you've heard this community backlash. Whether we can implement the scheme on August first, to a large extent, it depends on whether um the recovery rate can be increased in private housing estates or in single-block buildings with many households that will affect the implementation of the M S W charging scheme on August first. Secretary. Thank you, Member. The Chief Executive and I have said many times that we are conducting the demonstration scheme of the M S W charging scheme. We will take stock of the demonstration scheme, all the experiences we've had, what we need to take note of, what problems we need to overcome and so on. This is to prepare the government for the implementation of the scheme in order that we can map out the future direction. We'll consider all these factors in a holistic manner. Thank you. Next, Mister Kwok Wai Kung.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on O eight four. I have to thank the Bureau. The Bureau gave me a reply of four pages. It's quite detailed. In paragraph C, the department mentioned the scheme transmater, food transmater. That is a food waste pretreatment system need to be developed to convert food waste into slurry. So the waste can be stored in sealed order control tanks for a couple of days before it is being delivered to the E P D's food waste treatment facilities for conver- well, for conversion into energy that can reduce the frequency of transportation rounds as well as the costs involved. According to the reply from the administration, some thirty schemes are in place. I'd like to know the effectiveness of this system. What is the expenditure of one set of systems? How effective is it in the reply? In the future, there will be the introduction of some more technologies or systems with even more cost-effectiveness. Do you mean that the effect of, I mean the effectiveness of food transmater is not that good? If so, we will be continuing to use food transmater? I'd like to know how we can enhance our work on food waste recycling.
Secretary. Thank you, Member, for your question. Regarding the price and the effectiveness of food transmater, I will invite Doctor Samu Choi, Director of E P, to take your question. Regarding food transmater, it's a very good system. It's a very good piece of equipment in general. In large wet markets or shopping centers, there are a couple of markets where trans- food transmater is used. The benefit is that food transmater can collect more food waste, convert the food waste into slurry and store the food waste in sealed order control tanks. It will be processed only once or twice before being delivered to the E P D's food waste treatment facilities. On a daily basis, it can process about one ton of food waste. The cost involved is around below one million dollars. Transportation is quite convenient. And after the processing stage, it does not have to go through the process once again in food waste plants, so it's actually very good. At present, there are a total of ten food transmater having been installed. Twenty are still being prepared. We need to order the system, for example. The other reason why we don't have a lot of food transmatters is that it takes a large area to install and put the food transmater device. So there's a limited range of venues. Mister Kwak, any follow-up?
Thank you. Next, Miss Elizabeth Kwak. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on my question. Reply one three two, it's also about food waste. Many members of the public are concerned about environmental protection and they are considering recycling food waste. This is indeed very good. But if we have to farewell in food waste reduction, the recycling chain is of the utmost importance. Now we have heightened awareness of environmental protection and food waste recycling. We need to increase the number of recycling spots. Apart from public spots, it is hoped that in private housing estates or in places that are more accessible, there should be food waste recycling spots or points. So I'd like to know whether the administration has more scientific means to install food waste bins. For example, in shiny buildings, where are you going to put these bins? We need to make it available all across Hong Kong. All right, when we have these bins, when citizens are willing to put food waste into the bins, but what about they are already reaching their capacity when they are full? What should citizens do? We need to make full use of these bins, so we need to clear the bins as frequently as we need to. Right now, the situation is that there's no, no one to clear the bins when they are full. So will the administration use big data to handle these bins, the clearing of these bins? We can also use computers to plan the optimized, I mean the optimal recycling route and time. We need to leverage on technology to handle food waste recycling and improve the efficiency. We also need to have sufficient recycling facilities. We have O Park One and other sewage plants or water treatment facilities. If we have more spots for citizens to recycle food waste, can our facilities keep pace with the policies rolled out by the administration? I hope there will be good recycling network and fa- and facilities so that citizens will have peace of mind when the M S W charging scheme is rolled out. Thank you.
Director will take the question on food waste. Thank you, Chairman. Let me start by saying this. In fact, we have installed more and more food waste treatment facilities. We have some four hundred, five hundred of them. And we also leverage on big data that helps us keep track of the situation. According to big data, ninety-nine percent of the time, these bins are in operation. That means for less than one percent, these be- these bins may be full or there may be other kinds of malfunctioning. In fact, recently, we've encountered a network signal problem. Now, when the bins are seventy percent full, the cleaners or the cleaning companies concerned will automatically receive notifications for the bins to be cleared. Well, these bins filled up quite quickly. The man- property management companies couldn't catch up. And that is why we have a step-up liaison with them to teach them uh how to use these bins. And we are installing more bins at refuse collection points, at the Green and Community Recycling Points, et cetera, for use by the public. As for the endpoint treatment, O Park One and O Park Two, together with the plants at Chatin and Tai Po, we have a handling capacity of six hundred tons. And the sewage treatment plants will also be able to um treat the food waste and practice anaerobic co-digestion. And the existing facilities can be converted to increase capacity. Next, Mister Charman, Doctor Charman Kwan. Two follow-up questions. First, one seven two, about the one-for-one replacement scheme for electric vehicles. This is very effective. In twenty twenty-three, two twenty-eight thousand one hundred ninety-five benefited from the scheme. That's five times uh the number, five years ago. As we know, starting from this year, the first registration tax concession arrangement has been reduced. May I know this, the uh impact of this measure on promoting e-vehicles? And the progress? And about the E V cha- at-home charging subsidy scheme, um three point five million billion dollars have been set aside. And at the end of last year, because of the funding cap being reached, this scheme has been suspended. And six hundred and twenty-two applications out of seven hundred and thirty-two have been approved so far. Now, I understand from the reply here that there are certain conditions not met, leading to some applications not being approved. For example, um if it exceeds sixty percent of the parking space uh in the housing estate, then the application would not be approved. Would you consider adjusting the quota? Because now that this scheme has come to an end, you're putting a stop to the Hong Kong roadmap on popularization of electric vehicles. Or at least the progress will be very slow in promoting e-vehicles. Two questions, Secretary. I'll ask Mister Leng to take the two questions. Doctor Ken Flo.
For the one, for one replacement scheme, we're not putting a stop to it. We are extending it by two years, only that the first registration tax concession amount will be reduced. According to our assessment in the past two years, there's been a growth in the number of E Vs because of new models being introduced into Hong Kong.
And because of more models available, the prices have come down. Under the new F R T concession arrangement. If the pre-tax price is two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars or less. That, then um the uh concession will still apply. And as far as uh elec- um EV charging is concerned, it's seventy percent. Of the fuel uh of the cost of refueling vehicles. So adjusting this concession arrangement will not affect the promotion of EVs. Now, about the EV charging at home subsidy scheme. We did not accept the installation of charges. At outdoor parking spaces because of the substantial cost involved. For example, excavation works may be involved and they may need to comply with certain requirements of the buildings department. So outdoor parking spaces are not covered by the scheme. And we'll need to assess how the funds have been used before mapping the way forward. Doctor Chow. Well, I think that your answer is really out of touch with the reality because. Well, an EV is only sold a hundred and thirty-five thousand renminbi in the mainland, but it's sold at more than two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in Hong Kong. And in order to benefit from the concession arrangement, is, it has lowered the price to two hundred and sixty thousand dollars plus. In fact, I checked out this vehicle in the mainland. It's just exactly the same as the one sold in Hong Kong. So let's see by how much this uh number will drop. Right, your view is clear. Next. Um, Mister Kenneth Lau. E E B bracket E. Oh oh seven. Um, let me declare first of all that I am a, a EV user. According to the administration's reply, altogether at, at the end of twenty twenty-three. There were seven thousand one hundred and forty EV charges in Hong Kong. And for Chating, Tun Moon, they, uh in Chating. There are two thousand two hundred and forty-three charges. For Tun Moon, it had, this district has the fewest number of. EV charges, fewer than five hundred, just one hundred and twenty-nine. Uh, may I know the reason why? There is this uneven distribution of EV charges across the territory. In the future, will you consider installing more charging facilities in districts where there are fewer public charges? And according to the reply, there are two thousand and thirty-nine uh standard charges and four thousand two hundred and twenty-five medium. Speed charges and some one thousand one hundred quick charges. It takes four to seven hours to uh charge a vehicle with a medium speed charger. So about the slow, medium, quick charging charges and their installation, do you have any targets and the installation timetables? Yes, about popularization of e-vehicles. I will give the floor to Doctor Kenneth Lau. For charges across eighteen districts, there are some tw- two thousand of them in uh government buildings and remaining four thousand plus charges in private buildings. In government buildings, we will be installing more EV charges. My target is seven thousand. So you will see more EV charges being installed in government buildings in the relevant districts. About the uh slow, medium, and quick charges. For quick charges in particular, it takes a very short time to fully charge the vehicle. And if it is stored in a parking space, then the car parked there will take up this uh the uh space available. So. By this rationale, there would be fewer quick charges than medium-speed charges. Because it takes a short, much shorter time to fully charge an EV. So in. Our future plan in government buildings, we will make appropriate adjustments. Um, at the suitable locations, we'll install more quick charges. So that means you will start with government buildings because you have the say. And then for private buildings, you will work it out with the owners' corporations. And it is the government's policy to expedite the installation of charges, right? Uh, what about private housing estates, please? No quick charges will be installed in private housing estates. Because under the uh subsidy scheme, we only subsidize the installation of medium charges. In fact, there is another scheme. We would promote retrofitting petrol filling stations with EV charges. In fact, there are two sites that will be wholly converted into EV charging facilities. And we've invited uh the P F S operators to install quick charges at their stations. So that the distribution of charges across the territory will become more even. I will allow three more members to speak and then we'll wrap up this session. Doctor Loai Quoc. Chairman, a follow-up question. E E B bracket E one two O, one two one, and one two two. These three questions relate to waste management and recycling. And the collection of recyclables. This is an issue close to the heart of many members. Secretary, the MSW charging scheme has sparked a lot of controversies in the community, but now the bone of contention has changed. At first, we discussed how sturdy the green bags are and whether the bags were able to accommodate a um a mop. And now we turn to another issue, and that is recycling. Now, Secretary, you should be happy about this because this is, after all, the original intention of MSW charging. MSW charging is not a scheme for government to increase revenue, but rather to encourage. Waste separation and recycling. So the community has been discussing the difficulties in recycling and the lack of recycling uh facilities. Which is the original intention of the MSW charging scheme. Now, this is the problem we face. This is an initiative that will affect all households in Hong Kong. The ideal situation should be. That every household find it very convenient to handle their waste since there are recycling points uh nearby. And these points will take different types of recyclables, metal, plastics, et cetera. In fact, Secretary, according to this clip produced with the celebrity Maria Codaro, you shouldn't uh need to spend a penny more. On uh the uh designated bags. If you do recycling well. But according to some members, even if there are sufficient recycling points. Is there. A proper chain for the re- for handling recyclables? Well, as a council member, we scrutinize a number of. Bills relating to producer responsibility schemes on glass, beverage, bottles, and so on and so forth. But more should be done. So my question is on recycling points, food waste collection points, the recycling chain. Do you have a timetable? Do you have a roadmap?
It's quite a detailed comment, but it's anyway about the recycling chain. Can you give us a brief reply? Thank you, Secretary. I go along with members. Our recycling network. Is pivotal to the MSW charging scheme. In the recycling network and the food waste scheme. They are already um ready. What about the recycling chain in the downstream, like wastepaper? Metal, plastics, and so on. We'll work hard to expand the recycling network in the upstream. Thank you. Next, Miss Chen Hoi Yan. I'd like to ask about O three six, three seven, and three five. That's about food waste and MSW charging. I believe we support environmental production and recycling food waste. But in the reply of the administration. They put members into different classes according to recycling. And food waste recycling. Seven um smart recycling bins can be installed. Seven, well, I mean, seven hundred recycling bins can be installed in housing estates. In your answer to our question, you said covering one-third on the entire Hong Kong's population. What about two-thirds of the population in Hong Kong? Do they not need to do any food waste recycling? They don't have any bins, so what, what can they do? But the administration um turns a blind eye to the situation. You should have heard. From many members of the public, there are problems with the smart recycling bins. So my question is, what about two-thirds of the population? On the first of August, is it the case that their food waste will not be charged? Is it the case? You mentioned the bins are used up to ninety-nine percent. Well, I should put it this way. How many bins are not cleared up when they are full so the citizens cannot recycle food waste much as they want to? About reply, O three five, about MSW charging scheme. Well, greener community is not available in all districts in Hong Kong. For example, in Meifu, ninety-nine. Percent of the blocks. Lack the relevant facilities. In your reply, I hope you will focus on my question. You gave me a general reply. You told me um the cost of food waste smart recycling bins. Can you provide more such bins in other districts? About smart recycling bins and greener community, Secretary, please. About the recycling network. I will ask Doctor Samu Choi, Director of Environmental Protection, to answer members' question. Thank you, Chairman. As we mentioned, in public housing estates. We already replied to another member. In private housing estates. We are using the E C F, Environment and Conservation Fund, to serve the public. It targets private housing estates. And private housing estates need to make an application with the E C F before arrangements can be made. Since the launch of the scheme, we have received a total of one hundred and fifty applications. We are placing bins in private housing estates. It is not the case that we are not working on it. We will work in um single-block buildings with um or housing estates with more than one hu- one thousand households. In the next stage, we will place recycling bins. For estates with over, I mean, and below five hundred households. We have also deployed resources to property management companies and the housing department to replace the recycling bins. When they are seventy percent full. An alarm will be triggered for the replacement of the bins. In the morning or in the afternoon, property management companies will also replace the bins or clear up the bins. According to schedule. About greener community. We have recycling spots. We also have recycling stations and so on. We need to think how we can set up greener community facilities in private housing estates. So what about placing smart recycling bins in these areas? They can collect points, and this is also a more hygienic manner to promote recycling. But we need to think. We need to discuss with property owners and property management companies. We discussed with some housing estates and they were kind of against placing smart recycling bins or there were. I mean, there was resistance in the community. So we need to sort out the problem. Next, Doctor So Chengwen, the last member to speak. Thank you, Chairman.
I need to follow up on. E E B brackets E O three O. It's about EVs. Just now, in the opening remarks. The secretary mentioned. Promoting de-popularization of EVs. In your reply, you said that in the government fleet. EVs only account for two point five percent. And only eight percent for the total number of cars owned by the government. In twenty twenty-three. For um the procurement of general vehicles or general-purpose vehicles. They only account for some fourteen point one percent of the total number of vehicles procured. All over Hong Kong. EVs account for sixty-four point six percent out of the total number of all newly registered vehicles. It's much lower than the overall level in Hong Kong. The administration said that it needed to promote the popularization of EVs. You need to take the lead in doing so. I'd like to ask the administration if it has any plans to drastically increase the number of EVs among your procurement. Do you have any target in this connection? E E B brackets E O two six. I'd like to ask the same question once again. It was asked by Miss Chen Hoi Yan, but I'd like to ask once again regarding the um. Smart food waste recycling bins, they are full. You said that they will be recycled or replaced when they are seventy percent full. But actually, many bins are already full. No cleaners clear up the bins, and citizens have no choice but to place the um rubbish or litter next to the bins. That will attract mice. And so on. So I'd like to know more about this. You should be very clear about the situation. You know that there's a lack of facilities. So I'd like to know what measures you have. I'd also like to follow up on E E B brackets E O six one. It's about the disposal of plastic products. The first phase will be implemented on the twenty-second of April this year. You said that twenty thousand. Small and medium-sized eateries. Have been surveyed. I'd like to know how many of these eateries have changed to using plastic tableware. Regarding the second phase of the implementation scheme, when will it start? Well, there are three questions. The secretary may have to answer in brief. Popularization of EVs, smart recycling bins being full. And the last question asked by Doctor So. On EVs, I will ask Doctor Kenneth Lung to take the question. Regarding food waste recycling bins and plastic products, I will ask Doctor Samu Choi to answer member. Doctor Kenneth Lung. Thank you, Chairman. Regarding the procurement of vehicles. The government procures vehicles according to their plan.
the government procures vehicles according to their plan. Our latest procurement requirement is said for seven-seater government vehicles, general-purpose vehicles, the government will have to procure V- EVs unless there are special arrangements. For example, a lack of um charging facilities. Only on this occasion, we will allow the the um relevant department to procure non-EVs. Regarding food waste and the um recycling bins, Doctor Samuel Choi?
Thank you, Chairman. Regarding food waste bins, we will set up such bins in housing estates step by step. We hope that every single housing estate will also be equipped with a recycling bin. In general, one bin can um take the um household waste of sixty to seventy households. When they are full, they will be replaced. So one smart recycling bin can cater for the needs of five hundred households. In a housing estate or in a block of buildings, in the initial stage of the implementation, only up to ten percent of households will use this bin. So we will monitor the situation. We will keep an eye on the big data. If there's a lack of of facilities, we will add more recycling bins. Regarding plastics, we visited twenty thousand stores in February or March during our visits. We found that twenty-one percent of the eateries or restaurants had already changed to use non-plastic tableware. They are not disposable. That was before March. We'll expect that this, there will be more and more eateries and restaurants. It's almost time. The administration can discuss with members after the meeting. This session has come to an end. The next meeting will um take place at three twenty in the same conference room. Thank you, administration. Thank you, members.